Everybody, please rise for our pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Hey, John Brown, President Warren City Council is going to lead us in prayer today. All bow our heads, please. Thank you dear God for this day. God bless this county. Keep us strong and healthy and happy. Help us to always do our best. Amen.
I'd like to ask for a moment of silence for Israel right now.
Yeah, our next public workshop will be Tuesday, October seventeenth at ten a.m. in this room. Next regular meeting will be next Wednesday, October eighteenth at ten thirty also in this room. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Here.
Ms. Frenchco.
Here.
Mr. Malloy.
Here.
Item number one is to dispense with reading the minutes of the regular meeting dated October fourth, two thousand and twenty-three. Accept and approve the video recording of the October fourth, two thousand and twenty-three Commissioners' Regular Meeting as the official meeting minutes.
A motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number two is to approve the bills.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number three is to approve additional appropriations.
A motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
I'd say yes, with the exception of common pleas.
Item number four is to transfer appropriations.
A motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number five is to receive the amended certificate of the County Budget Commission, number twenty dash two thousand and twenty-three.
A motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Okay, item number six is to remove from table item sixteen from the October fourth, two thousand and twenty-three meeting, volume one fifty-seven, page two six zero one three.
A motion to remove from table.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
From Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number seven is to authorize the Board of Commissioners to join with the Trumbull County Prosecuting Attorney to file an application with the Court of Common Pleas for the appointment of Attorney Robert Burkey as legal counsel for the Trumbull County Board of Commissioners to provide legal research, advice, and consulting to handle any related litigation relating to a petition for annexation related to parcel number twenty-eight dash five two two zero zero, also known as three nine seven two Youngstown Road, southeast Warren, Ohio, four 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 eight four.
Keep reading, please.
The Trumbull County Prosecutor's Office generally assists in matters such as this one, but in this case, this office faces a conflict of interest because we represent multiple parties involved in this matter. Attorney Robert Burkey will provide legal counsel and representation at the rate of two hundred dollars per hour.
Make a motion to approve.
Well, second that.
This discussion, do we even know what type of annexation this is yet?
We do not. We're here consulting with him to hire an attorney based on the prosecutors to tell us if we even need an attorney. So we don't, we already have him on retainer and he'll give us the advice on that since our prosecutor can't.
First time representing on an annexation and she, and he really wasn't sure of it. Secondly.
Please talk into the microphone. They can't hear you.
Secondly, there's, there's no need to hire an attorney when we don't even know if it's going to be a contested type. The Engineers' Office, I don't believe, is even hiring an attorney at this juncture. We should wait to see what type of annexation petition comes before us before someone is retained. And if we did retain someone, it should be someone with more expertise in annexations. There's no reason to hire someone when it might not even be contested.
I respectfully disagree.
I respectfully disagree also. He's already in retainer. It'll cost him, cost us the bare minimum for him to look at the annexation and tell us if we need him or not. Since he's already on retainer with us, I'd like to continue with him.
We're the county administrators in absence of one. If we don't have the ability to look at that and you, or you don't, I should say, have the ability to look at that and determine whether or not council's needed, then that's an embarrassment. So go ahead and hire an attorney.
We've got a motion and a second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
No.
Item number eight is to concur with the county engineer to grant the special hauling permit to haul steel coils. And that's for J. Row Transportation Services, Inc.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number nine is to concur with the Trumbull County Engineer to grant the right-of-way permits requested by the companies listed. That's Clerich Farms LLC and Dominion East, Ohio.
A motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes. There are no typos on the names on the next item, are there, Mr. Gargano? Or anyone? Okay. Are there, Alex? No. Okay. Okay.
Item number ten is to approve employment for fourteen candidates based off of the rubric scores for vacant positions at both Trumbull County Department of Job and Family Services and Child Support Enforcement Agency. And I'll read the note. The candidates would be, would begin employment on Monday, November sixth, two thousand and twenty-three, receive full county benefits, and serve a nine-month probationary period. The candidates have completed a BCV FBI background check and drug and alcohol screening with favorable results.
A motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cant.
I just want to add to the, a comment on this. Please make sure that I have the individual sheets for each candidate that's being approved. I asked for that last time. And I was getting it up until there was a, up until the last round of hires, I was receiving it. And I didn't get it this time or the time before, since a new person there took, took that position. So can we make sure that I get those, please? Thank you.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
From Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number eleven is to approve funds requested by the Trumbull County Metro Parks District to hire a part-time office manager for twelve hours per week in the amount of ten thousand nine hundred and thirty-four dollars and to transfer said amount from account zero zero one dash one twenty dash one thousand, one thousand dash one dash five oh five eight zero five two nine eight one dash zero 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 dash fifty-six hundred, fifty-six hundred dash three dash four one three zero zero zero.
A motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Oh, Ms. Frenchco.
Abs- absolutely not, because it, it wasn't in the budget. This individual is the director and this job description looks like it was just not even made necessarily for this position as talking about other department heads. Someone did this for him. And he should be able to operate the finances there as the director. So this is, so this is foolish. But, no.
I disagree. Metro Park system is very crucial and important to our citizens. We got a bike trail we need to maintain. We have other properties that are used by tens of thousands of citizens. We have a one-man show over there now.
I was able to assert the reason for my no vote, but if you want to engage in discussion, the, it was previously done by someone who was the Secretary of the Board for two hundred dollars a month. And there's no reason that the director can't absorb a small additional duty.
I think the director's overworked as it is. He's out fixing picnic tables when he should be getting grant money and being an an executive director. And now to add the burden of doing the books and the payroll and everything else on top of it when we had someone doing it for years.
A part-time employee to do finance.
Twelve hours a week.
Uh, yeah.
Minimally paid.
And you can see what it is, what's required. It says, it says what they would be doing is purchasing payroll, financial reporting, things like that, but only requires a a school diploma. So, okay.
We're. Hiring a.
Someone.
Our time person.
And, and by the way, by the way, we, by the way, Commissioner, we did our.
HR Director that can't even do, uh, reporting and projection.
Can we stay on task, please?
Reporting and projection of our, um, the financial impact of contract.
Getting back to, getting back to the agenda.
What type, what type of degree do you need to handle payroll for two people? To turn in payroll for two people?
I think the director.
Is that very hard?
I think the director can do that for himself. There's no reason that he can't be able to handle.
And answer the phone when he's out.
Hundreds of miles of properties and we have a department of one.
The whole time.
We have a department of one.
All right.
And, and by the way, we did our due diligence and we looked for contracting.
All right.
Can I?
All right. No, no, we're actually.
We did our due diligence.
Voted, so we're, so.
Why do you hate the parks?
Tell you what we did.
We've already voted, so.
I want to tell you what we did. Can I please speak?
We've already.
Did our due diligence. We looked.
Commissioner Cannon-Lace has the floor.
We're not on the, we're not on the agenda. I am making a motion that we, that we return back to the agenda where.
We are on the agenda. I'm trying to educate you on what happened that led up to this.
Order, motion for order.
Commissioner Cannon-Malasa has the floor.
For order of the day.
Commissioner.
And that's not how that works.
No, I'm telling you, Commissioner.
Agenda item.
Call the roll to see if we're out of order.
Commissioner Cannon-Malasa has the floor.
I'll, I'll speak to the press after. This is ridiculous, Commissioner. I'm sorry. We need to move the proceedings forward. It's ridiculous.
Item number twelve is to authorize notice to proceed letter to be issued to Boakensuns, Inc. for the Trumbull County Planning Commission Building Roof Replacement Project funded through the American Rescue Plan Act and to request that the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners authorize Danny Malloy to sign a notice, notice to proceed letter.
A motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number thirteen is to enter in, into a support and maintenance agreement with Intelletech Corp. to provide maintenance and licensure to operate the Intelletech IMAC Jail Maintenance Management System in the Trumbull County Jail. The agreement will be for three years, beginning on October tenth, two thousand and twenty-three, and expiring on October ninth, two thousand and twenty-six. The total cost is one hundred and thirty-five thousand, payable in three annual payments of forty-five thousand dollars.
A motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Because it wasn't approved yet by the Prosecutor's Office and it wasn't given all of the information, which included that, to make a decision now.
Item number fourteen is to authorize the Senior Levy Administrator Diane Siskowick-Djorkovic to prepare and submit the Department of Aging Healthy Aging Grant. Registration for this funding opportunity is only available to the Trumbull County Commissioners as established through House Bill thirty-three of the one thirty-fifth General Assembly for all Ohio counties to address social determinants of health and to foster improved quality of life for older Ohioans, so they may remain in their homes and be connected to their communities, preserve their personal assets, and promote a healthy, independent, active lifestyle, and authorize Danny Malloy, President of the Board of Commissioners, to sign and execute related documents, including but not limited to grant agreement if awarded the funds.
A motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Okay, item number fifteen is to adopt a resolution authorizing expenditure for responding to or mitigating the public health emergency from American Rescue Plan Act funds. And this is for Niles Historical Society. And Commissioners, if you'll go to the next page, I'll read the specifics. Toward the bottom, whereas the Niles Historical Society is a five oh one C nonprofit, which provides historical preservation and education for the community. And whereas the Niles Historical Society has requested funding, the amount of sixty-three thousand, fifty dollars for a renovation project relating to the historical barn and historical greenhouse of the Ward Thomas House. And whereas the Niles Historical Society has indicated that once repaired, the historical barn and greenhouse will be made available for educational programming in the five acres upon which the Thomas Ward House is preserved, will be open to the public as green space. And whereas the county has determined that the Niles Historical Society has demonstrated it is adversely impacted industry and the grant request is reasonable responsive the harm, and therefore the county has determined that in the judgment of the board, the following grant qualifies as, as a type of project which will respond to and mitigate the adverse economic effects of the pandemic, which consists of the following. A grant, a one-time grant to the Niles Historical Society in the amount of sixty-three thousand, fifty dollars to be used for the preservation of the historical Thomas Ward property, including replacing the roof on the barn and repair and replacing the roof, gla- glass walls and ventilation system in the greenhouse, which will enable the society to make the property open to the public for educational and recreational green space.
Motion to approve a resolution authorizing ARPA expenditures for the Niles Historical Society.
Second.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
And then number sixteen goes along with that to enter into an agreement between the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners and the Niles Historical Society as approved by, um, ARPA Legal Counsel for the society to preserve and improve the historical Thomas Ward House, barn and greenhouse to allow the property to open to the public for green space, education, and recreational purposes as fully described in Exhibit A. And the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners allocates the sum of sixty-three thousand, fifty dollars to the society from ARPA Fund Number zero seven seven zero one one, one thousand, one thousand dash one dash five zero five five zero six.
A motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number seventeen is to adopt a resolution authorizing expenditure for responding to or mitigating the public health emergency from American Rescue Plan Act funds. And this is for Harriet Taylor Upton Association. And Commissioners, if you'd go on the next page. Whereas the Harriet Taylor Upton Association is a five oh one C nonprofit, which provides historical preservation and education for the community. And whereas the Harriet Taylor Upton Association has requested funding the amount of fifty-eight thousand, eight hundred and twenty-nine dollars for a renovation project for historical structure preserved by the association, including installation of an HVAC system and necessary roof repairs. And whereas the county has determined that the Harriet Taylor Upton Association has demonstrated it is an adversely impacted industry and the grant request is reasonable response of the harm. And therefore, the county has determined that in the judgment of the board, the following grant qualifies as a type of project which will respond to and mitigate the adverse economic effects of the pandemic, which consists of the following. A one-time grant to the Harriet Taylor Upton Association in the amount of fifty-eight thousand, eight hundred and twenty-nine dollars to be used for the association's preservation of the Harriet Taylor Upton House to install an HVAC system and conduct necessary roof repairs as set forth in the grant agreement.
Motion to approve adopting a resolution to authorize expenditure of ARPA funds for the Harriet Taylor Upton Association.
Second.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
And then item eighteen goes along with that to enter into an agreement between the Board of County Commissioners and the Harriet Taylor Upton Association as approved by ARPA Legal Counsel to preserve the historic Harriet Taylor Upton Home with HVAC roof repairs and renovations to allow the property to open to the public for historic museum and educational purposes as fully described in Exhibit A. And the Board of County Commissioners allocates the sum of fifty-eight thousand, eight hundred and twenty-nine dollars to the association from ARPA Fund Number zero seven seven zero one one, one thousand, one thousand dash one five oh five five zero six.
A motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item nineteen is to adopt a resolution authorizing expenditure for responding to or mitigating the public health emergency from the American Rescue Plan Act funds. And this is for Vienna Historical Society. And on the next page, Commissioners, um, center, whereas the Vienna Historical Society is a five oh one C nonprofit, which provides historical preservation and education for the community. And whereas the Vienna Historical Society has requested funding the amount of sixty thousand dollars for a renovation project for historical structure preserved by the society, including an HVAC system and repairs. And whereas the county has determined that the Vienna Historical Society has demonstrated it is adversely impact impacted industry and the grant request is reasonable response of the harm, and therefore the county has determined that in the judgment of the board, the following grant qualifies as a type of project which will respond to and mitigate the adverse economic effects of the pandemic, which consists of the following. A one-time grant to the Vienna Historical Society in the amount of sixty thousand dollars for the preservation of the Copper Penny Building, including installation of a gas furnace, an air conditioner, a wheelchair ramp, a fire escape, new gutters, and electrical upgrade as set forth in the grant agreement attached hereto as Exhibit A.
Motion to approve a resolution authorizing an ARPA expenditure for the Vienna Historical Society.
Second.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
And item twenty goes along with that to enter into an agreement between the Board of County Commissioners and the Vienna Historical Society as approved by ARPA Legal Counsel for the society to preserve and improve the Copper Penny Building with HVAC, electrical, and ADA upgrades to allow the property to open to the public for historic museum and educational purposes as described in Exhibit A. And the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners allocates the sum of sixty thousand dollars to the society from ARPA Fund Number zero seven seven zero one one, one thousand, one thousand dash one dash zero five zero five five zero six.
Motion to approve entering agreement between the Board of Commissioners and the Vienna Historical Society for the project at, at the Copper Penny Building.
Second.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Item twenty-one is to grant permission to the county engineer to close the road listed, and that is Brockway Sharon Orangeville Road in Brookfield Township. And this is an emergency bridge closure.
Motion to approve the bridge closure.
Second.
Ms. Frenchco.
Or the road closure. Is it the road or?
The road.
Uh, the road. Okay.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Malloy.
Yes. Yeah, that concludes our regular business on the agenda today.
Um, I'd like to request that the Commissioners hold a meeting to discuss the um, activities that have been done related to the educational highway and include um, us, our legal counsel, the engineer, and their legal counsel. We have been paying bills for two, two sets, two attorneys. And I believe that we need to be able to, uh, provide an appropriate update to the public. A lot of people have reached out including trustees, really, a trustee was even asking about the activities over there and, uh, at the educational highway. And I want to make sure that we are transparent and I'd like to call a meeting related to that.
For when?
Uh, whenever they're available. So we have to ask our scheduler to find out what, because it's going to include two attorneys as well. There was a period of time when Commissioner Cantala Mesa actually thought that the attorney that we were paying for the engineer was our attorney. So I want to know, I want to know what's going on.
That's not true. That's why we hired another attorney.
You reached out to him, though. You, you reach out to your own counsel. Uh, that's the case. So at any rate, I, I would like to have.
It wasn't our counsel. It was counsel appointed to the county engineer. Please stop with the lies and false information.
Yeah.
And we are nearing a completion on this. And you have no idea what we're doing, but we're nearing a conclusion on this, where we're going to dedicate the road formally. So please do not.
So that's why we need to have a meeting because there might be some other implications.
All our attorney and get the information from the attorney.
I am, we need a meeting because there could be some.
There is attorney-client privilege in these discussions. Call the attorney and see if you can talk to him about it.
When have we had an executive session or any type of meeting with our attorneys or them been given?
Well, if you want to have executive session, that's different.
Did they, who gave them the directive to do that dedication?
What directive?
You said that they were.
Trying to dedicate the road. That's what we were trying to do in the process.
Not what the engagement or the original journal.
So you don't agree with that.
Well, what I'm.
Formal dedication.
Asking you at whose directive is he doing that? The board is.
The Board of Commissioners.
The Board of Commissioners told him to do that?
That's why we hired. That's why we hired him in the resolution, in the resolution that we passed. In the resolution that we passed.
Again, so let's.
It's for the formal dedication of the road. There, it doesn't need to be a meeting. If you want to have executive session, we can have.
I think we need to meet.
Two attorneys first. Two attorneys are not going to come to a public meeting. I'm sorry.
For an executive session, uh, to be on it perfectly.
Commissioner, do you want to dedicate the road or not? Do you want the road formally dedicated?
Fine. I will have a meeting with the county engineer. And if he wants to bring his counsel, he can, because I believe that there might be some.
Well, if you can bring your counsel.
I think we need to meet with our attorney first and see what he's done.
Have you talked to our attorney?
Have you talked to our attorney?
Have you talked to our attorney?
We need to meet with him.
Have you spoken to our attorney? He's done a lot, actually, if you get the emails. We're nearing a completion on this. If you check your emails.
And whose directive?
At the board's directive. We want to dedicate that road.
I, I, it's in the minutes of past board meetings.
That's why we hired the attorney.
To work on this.
To do.
And you haven't met with him at all. Didn't meet with him.
Who's directive? At the board's directive. We passed this a long time ago to, for him to look at how to formally dedicate the road.
Exactly what they, what it said. Okay. Exactly what they, what it said. Okay.
I'm sorry.
You want to meet with their other attorney and his attorney, not with ours first. Makes no sense.
Said from day one that we needed to hire someone who specialized in joint economic development districts because there are some other issues related out there that aren't just as simple as a dedication, and a dedication causes some other issues as well that are impacting on the, uh, the township, but.
There are no, there are no issues impacting on the township.
Capable of understanding that, and I will not go to where I went last year trying to explain this, but I will have, I will suggest a public meeting so that's, and bring someone who can interpret it for you. Because there's, there, there are some serious problems that could arise and that we should be addressing as Commissioners to make sure that this moves forward smoothly.
What we need to do.
Information, there's serious problems that could arise. If you haven't spoke to the attorney, where are you getting your information?
I know these.
You just know.
Some of us know things. Some of us understand.
I didn't know you were a, a professional know-it-all.
Okay.
Clearly, you've been consulting with somebody. Clearly, you've been consulting with somebody. We have our own attorney, and you haven't even talked to our attorney.
See that women are capable of independent thought.
Nikki, you play every card in the deck except the truth card, the woman card, the military card, the race card, the ethnic card.
Okay.
The, the victim card, every card in the deck except the truth card. You need to tell the truth once in a while.
It's not cute for a big bully to sit and insult a woman every meeting and act like I don't understand.
To hide behind the woman, or I'm Hispanic, or I'm this, or I'm that, just because you don't want people to know you're wrong.
Make some more.
Why don't you talk to our attorney that you paid for?
About someone related to, you know, ethnic stereotype.
You're paying, you are paying an attorney. A Board of Commissioners is paying an attorney. You haven't even read the email from him.
Do you understand the implications? Do you know what a jet is?
I do know what a jet is.
Explain, explain what the issue is.
And I've talked to, I've talked to Champion Township Trustees myself. I do understand for that big project, we should have a jet.
Sure.
The road dedication first. Right now, they're fighting over who has the road. Hospital project, because we don't own the road.
It actually.
We never formally dedicated yet. I've talked to the engineer Smith also.
Idea. You have no idea.
It's terrible.
It is terrible. It is terrible.
At the end of the day.
So again.
The township is worried about the maintenance of that road.
Never talks to him. Makes no sense. How much have you paid him? Have we paid this attorney?
Oh, yeah.
I have not. I didn't hire him. You guys did before I got here.
You went back and forth or?
I've talked to him. We hired him.
Okay, so who went back and forth with the emails? Who told him what to do?
I've spoken to him on the phone. The road dedication is why we hired him, Commissioner.
Okay.
Go look at the resolution. The road dedication is first and foremost. Go look at the.
Copy of that resolution right after the meeting.
Also, look at our prosecutor's opinion that talks about how common law dedication does not suffice, and we have to do a formal dedication.
I.
You not seen that one?
I, I, I did all the research, called the original meeting, brought it to the Board's attention, while you sat on it for years, and I try, I brought people together to actually move it forward. So.
You've sat, I've sat on it for years, but you haven't spoken to the attorney one time.
I've been here eight months and the first I've heard of the words come out of your mouth in eight months.
I, I.
So why today?
Uh, ju, because I got, okay. It's been a, an ongoing problem.
What's an ongoing problem?
Without having any communication with the Board of Commissioners to obtain directive.
I have communication with the attorney. I can't help it that you don't have it.
Are you authorized to make decisions on behalf of the Board?
We voted on a decision for the road dedication once and for all. That's what we're looking into. The road dedication.
Okay. All right. You guys are literally in court for violating sunshine, and you're instructing the employ, uh, open meetings, and you're round-robining and communicating with the attorney.
I'm having phone calls with the attorney.
One person that can violate the sunshine law, is he's dealing with it, one Commissioners?
Listen.
We'll find out.
I haven't dealt with any of this.
Contact the attorney because you haven't yet and have your own conversation.
I don't violate sunshine.
You need to have the information.
You do.
To you.
Okay.
He's our attorney.
You can go on executive session and meet with an attorney together. That does not violate sunshine. He works for all three of us.
Idiot. You have no idea the reasons for an executive session.
Oh, I'm an idiot because I'm a man?
No, what?
Because I'm white?
What are the?
You call me an idiot because I'm white?
Reasons for executive session? What are the reasons? You're the president of the Board.
We can meet with our attorney, attorney-client privilege to talk about this issue.
No, that's not a reason to.
Actually, we shouldn't with him. You should be communicating with him. And I don't know why you haven't.
An annexation is not an approved reason to go into executive session. Do you understand that there are certain reasons that you can and can't?
Where do you see annexation in this? I didn't, why does annexation come up in this? This road dedication, not an annexation.
Related to, it, it doesn't, okay, but it doesn't relate to certain reasons for, there are certain reasons to go into executive, executive session. One is, um.
Hire somebody to fire somebody? Well, it seems like we hired this guy, and we're going to look at the progress, see if we're going to hire him to do more work or not regarding the dedication.
Not believe, the more you talk, the more stupid you sound.
I should just let you talk all day, and I'm going to have to say a word.
Not, you, you really think you can go into an executive session, just, just like we had the annexation attorney, anything that relates to lands or zoning or planning, that you do not have a reason to go into executive session? There are not, there are authorized reasons pursuant to the revised code, and then there are the sunshine law, and then there are not approved reasons. That is not an approved reason.
So here's the solution. Call you, call our attorney and get an update on the status of educational highway. That's how you do it.
Okay.
That's why we hired him.
There are other implications. We need to have a meeting.
Those are your, your ideas that you have in your head. There are no other implications.
We discussed.
The other implications with the township will be, are not implications. They are what ifs.
I'll see if I can get the engineer, uh, and it'll be public. I'll make it public, and I'll announce that. I'll invite whoever, and I'll invite the engineer, our attorney, and their attorney, and if they don't want, want to go, then they don't have to go. But I will do that, and I'll, I'll announce it.
You are standing in the way of a billion-dollar investment here, and we want to get this road dedicated. You want to have meetings about what ifs.
Could have been addressed a decade ago while you've been a Commissioner and completely ignored the matter.
We need to get this road dedicated.
Okay. Why didn't you do it seven years ago or five years ago?
Why didn't, why didn't you talk to our attorney yesterday or, or a year ago?
You only knew it was a matter of, of concern when I brought it up and called the meeting. It was actually on Valentine's Day of, I believe it was.
First of all, Mercy Health wasn't even interested in the property seven years ago.
It doesn't matter. It, it's been a problem for the county for development. There's been other issues over there.
There hasn't.
Okay.
Point to one other development that could have gone in there that it was a problem, please. Name specifics. You can't. It's all lies.
No, it's not.
Yes, it is.
It could have been done.
You're making a show here, and we're trying to conduct business, and we're trying to get business done.
Exactly.
And that road dedication is very important to economic development. We need to get that done. You want to hold a meeting.
So why didn't you do it before? So economic development could have occurred over there in that town. You, you never even.
You don't even want to do it now.
You didn't do anything.
Want to do it now.
That's not correct. That's not what I said. I said I want to make sure that we have a meeting to discuss all the externalities and other implications and make sure that we're doing things.
You waited this long to do that?
I have been trying.
You've been trying to what? Schedule a meeting for two years? Three years?
Like an external, uh, uh, definition? Okay. Okay.
Fighting just to fight. It's just fighting, just.
No, no one wants to have a meeting and be, that's a little suspicious if the Commissioners don't want to have a public meeting to discuss.
It's not suspicious. You should talk to your attorney before you have any public meeting, first of all.
Okay.
Because I guarantee you, he probably won't come to it. He's going to advise you in private, as you should.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so moving on. Speaking of public meetings, ODOT is called a public, a non-public meeting next Wednesday, October eighteenth. Um, they don't want it to be public. I'd like to nominate, we can only have one Commissioner there. I'd like to nominate Commissioner Cannon-Malasa to go in and sit in. We're representing the Board. This one, and the reason being is.
I'd like to go. Let me just.
I have the floor. I have the floor, Commissioner. I have the floor. I have the floor.
Commissioner here who had.
I have the floor.
A motion that was seconded, so now it's discussion, buddy.
Okay, and I have the floor.
Learn how to run it. You're the president. You have to actually get up, get your butt out of the seat and leave if you want to actually run a meeting the right way, but you.
Are you seeing how belligerent this is? Is everybody seeing how belligerent this is?
You do not have the floor whenever you're the president.
This is ridiculous. You should be ashamed of yourself, honestly. You should be ashamed of yourself.
Reason I am nominating Commissioner Cannon-Malasa is you said at the last meeting, you cannot keep your mouth shut in regards to transportation, that you were in charge of it before, and they want this meeting to be a listening meeting to relay the information back to all three Commissioners. So by your own words, you stating at the last meeting, when it comes to transportation, I cannot, will not keep my mouth shut. That's what you said. I am quoting you directly. You can review the tape. So I feel it's better for us to send Commissioner Cannon-Malasa to go and listen and bring the information back to the three of us without adding input from the Board.
Turn that away.
That, that is not speaking on behalf of all three of the Board members. This is an informational gathering.
That's assault.
Please, just move it away from me, please. I'm sick. I don't want hot air blowing.
Be sick. Okay, so back to what, back, back to what we're saying, uh, that's completely ridiculous because all he's going, he's not going to do anything. He doesn't understand transportation, and I believe that Jeff Goodman said it best maybe about five years ago with a lovely quote he gave.
You destroyed transportation in this county.
Yeah.
Destroyed it.
Actually, it's been how many years since he has known? And, and our transit administrator who has known that we were not going to join WRTA, they should have been looking to fund it alternately a year, two years ago, but instead, we're waiting until after the funding is already gone. Uh, it's terrible. What does he actually do over there? I mean, you're paying someone more than you make, and he doesn't even get anything done, and there's no, there's no outcome measures or anything to show that there's any work product. There is no general public transportation, no transportation in Trumbull County, yet we're paying over a hundred, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year for a transit administrator, and then I was told by uh, you all here that, oh, we're just keeping him on until he, because he's got a year until he retires. That is not the way the county should be doing.
Who said that?
It's not.
Oh, just wait for it, guys. Wait for it.
Just lie.
That's what, that's what I was told. Um, and then the other thing that I want to say is that we have, um, the biggest thing before us right now is the Transportation Improvement District. There, there, and you have, you have not done anything to advance that. There is a fund, so you are both wrong on this. There's, I'm, I'm probably, again, I'm probably the only one who reached out to the state, but there, there, there is a, uh, there is a.
Absolutely wrong.
Okay, there is a funding deadline of the end of this month. And the applications, pre-application is o, opening up on October sixteenth, and our Board that is a, a brand-new Commissioner that didn't know where the, doesn't know what the difference between a tit or a tiff as of a couple of weeks ago, and still probably can't explain it, uh.
Why do you continually insult, insult people?
Auditor who just found out what the general ledger was two weeks ago.
The Board you wanted to put together wouldn't have even been assembled till after October sixteenth. By the time they would have met at their council meetings and trustee meetings, they would not have even been assembled by then.
It would have been.
We have, we have receipts from all the people we invited on the, on the Board. They've all accepted. Wait, I talked to, uh, to make progress to, to get the Speaker of the House to appoint someone to fill the last seat, and we're ready to go.
Pointed at yourself.
Write about it. Write, write about it in the trip, if, if, as long as you write about.
I mean, just pointed at you. Why are you pointing at me?
My hand, because my hands get cold.
I know, but you can do.
I used to put my hand under here until you guys built this, so you want to bitch. Oh, I can't do that now because it's not safe, so I have to keep it somewhere open where it's safe.
There's an automatic shut-off on it. Not true.
So there is funding available if the, if we would have actually, the first, that's, that's an opportunity for us. There's four point five million dollars available. I talked to them about putting, uh, the, the, but what they looked for and got an email with all the information related to ranking the applications. Um, and when you have a five-person group who is new and doesn't quite understand things, as opposed to thirteen people.
Which would be new and did not understand things.
And more people.
Thirteen people that don't understand things.
Are you saying that, like Darlene St. George doesn't know what she's doing, or might be?
Criticized last week.
These are the people who actually, uh, who would have been appointed by their communities, and had they been appointed, they would have, would have already been in place, and they're people who have experience working and putting these things together, these applications.
I believe Randy Smith and Jim Kinnick have a lot of experience putting these things together. And when we get together, I'm sure they will lead the meeting the correct way.
I'm sure that they would prefer to have a group of people. They've already expressed that that's what, the reason it came over requesting it to be, uh, put together that way was based on their request. So now you're acting, pretending like you're taking their suggestion, and when all you did was completely the opposite. So I just hope that we don't miss out on a funding opportunity because they wanted to play a little political game.
More gaslighting and, and ignorance.
Got your ignorance.
Motion for?
Uh, I'll second.
You know.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Cantal Mesa.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
No.
Okay, so.
Demonstrates that he doesn't know.
You're going to watch on the Zoom meeting like I will, and then after, after it's done, we'll be able to get together and discuss it in a public forum. Um, and then they'll probably have a public meeting after that, or we can conduct a public meeting, but this is requested by ODOT to be a private meeting with only one Commissioner in attendance.
And if you had asked ODOT who they would have preferred, that probably would have been the only one that they've dealt with over the last five years.
I'm pretty sure anybody in that Board would rather deal with anybody but you. If they want to make progress. So.
I have dealt with directly. I'm the one who knew that they were not going to be funding. Is it going to be dire? Is that just going to be there? It's over. Do you have comments? Leave the meeting. Comment.
Anybody from, yes, Diane.
So Diane Jerkovic, Senior Levy Administrator, I just want to thank you for allowing me to, um, send in the registration for the grant, uh, the seven hundred ninety thousand dollar grant. I hope we will get the award letter within the next couple of weeks. From there, I will be asking from direction from you how you want to proceed. It is a grant for the Trumbull County Commissioners to use for the aging, uh, the Healthy Aging Project, basically, and I would hope you would use the Advisory Council that you have appointed to help you make decisions on uh, how you want to use those awards. There are specifics with that, so we'll hold to the specifics, but I believe there'll be fifty percent of that grant that we can spend according to the state two thousand twenty-three through two thousand twenty-six aging plan. So I'll be looking for directive from that, but thank you.
Thank you for undertaking that, too, especially under such quick notice. Anybody else in the public have anything for the good of Trumbull County? Anybody from the phone lines? Hit star six and unmute yourself. Yeah, we've got a lot of requests also regarding the ARPA funds, people that were not approved in the, the last public meetings that we had. Again, I want to reiterate, we still have more than four million dollars left. We will be looking at the ones we ranked maybes um, down the road, and then um, some of the people were asking about modifying their grant requests. Um, that'll have to be something that if we get to a second round or another round, um, we still have funds available that we can consider at that time. Uh, we also, uh, Audrey Yoder's not here today, but she is putting together another spreadsheet of funds that were not used, funds we allocated that we gave out that may come back, and those will be added to the pot of what we have with the four million dollars that's still remaining. So doesn't mean that you're all done if you didn't get a call, or if you didn't hear your name, or or something was not voted on in your, um, favor. Everything is still pending until we're finally done with this thing, so please be patient. And for those that we did approve, there's over forty of them that the Attorney is looking at. It's going to take some time. We're going to try to get them on the agenda as quick as we can as, as they come back from the Attorney to see if we move forward with them or not. And there's a lot that goes into just journalizing these and writing the entries up for these things. So we'll do, like today, we did three, and I hope we can have at least as many every week as we spend the funds to get the money out in the community. It's no good sitting in the bank. And so we'd rather be in your hands and in the grant recipient's hands as quick as possible to get the money flowing in, into the community. Anybody else? Anything for the greater good? I don't intend a motion.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Oh, there are people on the line that, that want to talk, right?
Are we reopening it up?
Someone's talking?
I didn't vote yet. You want to hear them?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll withdraw my second on that at this time. On the line, you go ahead, star six, go ahead and talk. Your name and where you're from.
Okay, uh, it's Amanda Abear, Warren, Ohio. Um, just a couple of quick things. Um, I was wondering where you're at with the surveyor for the property for the pound. Um, if you've been able to get ahold of anyone yet to schedule that. Um, and also as a reminder, next Wednesday, the eighteenth at four P M. Um, at downtown at the Warren Police Department in the city, uh, the caucus room. There is going to be a health and welfare meeting to, um, revisit the ordinance for Warren City that states that pit bulls are vicious because they are born. Um, with October being National Pit Bull Awareness Month, it's actually perfect timing. I know that wasn't their intention. But it actually works out to be perfect timing for that meeting. Um, Ohio repealed that in two thousand twelve. So as it stands now, again, it is unconstitutional for the city to be doing it. This is their opportunity to do things correctly. The board has told us for years that they support what we do. This would be a great time for as a board or as individuals that you send a letter of support for the city to repeal those. Um, those, I will be in attendance, obviously. Those can be sent to me. I will put them in the package along with the other information. Um, and anyone, any other general members of the public that aren't able to attend could also send those to me as well.
What's the, what's the date on that, Amanda, again? I'm sorry, I missed it.
The eighteenth. Yeah, Wednesday, the eighteenth at four P M.
Okay.
I want to know more about what you're describing. You mentioned something being not constitutional. Can you explain that?
Yes. So before two thousand twelve, um, in the O R C, there were, there were breed specific legislation like Warren still has, meaning that, um, pit bulls and I believe a few other breeds were automatically deemed dangerous or vicious because they were born. Um, obviously as time progresses and thoughts and, uh, logic changes. Now, the Ohio, uh, the Ohio Revised Code has changed it to where appropriately, those designations are based on behaviors and actions, not because of breeds. As it should be. So the court has already, the Ohio Appeals Court has already ruled in two different cities. Reynoldsburg and just most recently in Gerard, that to have those breed specific legislations are unconstitutional, which is why is in the process of repealing theirs because they just got told by the court that they can't do it. So this is Warren's chance to do it on their own without the courts having to tell them that they have to do it.
Okay, so they have old legislation on the books that's now outdated because of changes at the state level.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
And the, the Ohio Appeals Court ruled that home rule, uh, would supersede the cities in this, in these kind of, uh, ordinances.
So they don't have home rule. The cities don't.
No, the state does.
Hmm. Okay.
All right, thank you.
If you, if you want, I can, um, send, email you guys the copy of the same packet. I'm going to take it next Wednesday if you'd like. I'm going to get that together here in the next day or so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. All right. I'll do that.
Anybody else on the line? Star six. Well, we wait for that. I want to remind our, my fellow commissioners, we have a very important hearing at Yankee Lake tonight at seven on the, uh, sewer and water project. Um, a public hearing, so.
So there, so there are no surprises. We didn't morph two separate surveys for this one, did we? Put together like you did on Elm Road. You didn't put two of them together?
Hi, Gary Newbrow, sanitary engineer. Uh, there are no assessments on this project. It is a capital charged project. And it was, uh, initiated, uh, by the need to get sanitary sewer service to the Yankee Lake Ballroom.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anyone else on the phone?
Not make a motion adjourned.
I, you know, I'm so disappointed because normally people, I mean, Patty's here and not even saying anything.
You don't, you don't have to attack and go after the public in this form.
Normally there's more. I don't know if it's because Mara is sick today.
Okay, here we go. You asked for it, Commissioner. Just remember, you asked for it.
Right?
Ask and you shall receive. Sean Shook, Trumbull County resident. Uh, Commissioner Malloy, I think you hit the nail on the head a little bit earlier when you said about the cards Ms. Frenchco plays. Since she's come into office, she's played a lot of cards. First it was they're against me because I'm a woman. They're against me because I'm a Republican. They're against me because I have a disability. And just last week it was they're against me because I'm Hispanic. She really played that card since last week. And I believe it's because the more she realizes she's not going to get reelected. She's desperately pushing for lawsuits against Trumbull County. So on her way out the door, she can get a big payday. So I caution the Board of Commissioners, I caution anybody who works for Trumbull County, be very cautious around this woman. She's pushing just like she did just now in this meeting. She couldn't let the meeting close. She had to push. I noticed she's in a rare mood today. And I wonder if that has anything to do with a recent incident at a tanning salon that I think the media will be breaking. Where she was at a tanning salon harassing employees. Yeah, that's going to come out real soon. But thank you for your time.
I guess I have a question too, since you opened it up, Commissioner. Last week you nominated, you appointed somebody to represent you at the planning commission meetings. Found out that this person you rep, you appointed is the Director of RAP that oversees parking in downtown Warren. You went into the RAP office and complained about a ticket you had. And then you demanded to meet with the Executive Director. You went in, you met with her for over an hour in her office unexpectedly. Came out with, the ultimate outcome was no ticket and you appointed the Director to represent you on a planning board and gave her a board seat with a vote. I, I'm going to ask how you think in this world that's ethical in any way, shape or form. You're the queen of ethics. You're the gotcha queen. Why would you go in and appoint the person who's in charge of parking tickets when you go in there for the reason to dispute a parking ticket you had?
You don't know.
Why would you appoint that person to represent you with a board?
You don't know.
I talked to her yesterday. The media talked to her. Um, but we talked to the secretaries. This was given to us as a tip from a secretary. You came in to complain about a ticket. And you would demanded to meet with the Director. After you met with the Director, you, you appointed her the next day to represent you on the board.
To talk about the tip as well and about the.
Talk about the what?
The Transportation Improvement District.
No, no, you went in there to talk about a ticket, a ten dollar ticket. You might get this lady's whole world disrupted.
This is so ridiculous.
Ethics. When the Ethics Commission looks at this.
It is absolutely.
Are you kidding?
It is absolutely ridiculous to suggest that I would do anything unethical over ten.
Why did you appoint her?
Over ten dollars. Like, seriously?
Did you pay for the ticket, Commissioner Frenchco?
This is insane.
Was the ticket dismissed? And you appointed her to represent us on the board, to represent your vote on the board. In what ethical world is that legal or ethical? Ethics commission wise, media wise, public scrutiny wise. You go in and get out of a ticket and then you appoint the person that got you out of a ticket to the board to represent you and you give them power? To me, that is quid pro quo. That brings all ethics things like I've never heard before. I'm disgusted by those actions.
I'm disgusted by you and so is everyone.
You're supposed to be the queen of ethics. I can't believe you did that to this poor woman. She's an innocent victim in this. And now her world is, is going to crumble around her with the public scrutiny for this.
Going to crumble around her.
Ethics violation wise.
And ethics violation.
I would, I would think she would step down just for ethic reasons.
I, I, that would be really, really interesting to just send it off, send in an ethics thing and, and, uh, that would be, that would be cute. That's ridiculous.
That's not cute. This, it's not cute at all.
Okay, well, send it in.
You go in and complain about a stinking ticket and you appoint the person to represent you on the board. Cause you said you can't get up early. Is what you told, she told me you told her.
Wow.
I mean, I've, I've never seen an ethics violation as, as heinous as that. I haven't. I just had my ethics training from the, from the state.
Okay.
We all did.
You, um, Dominic Marquez and who was the other guy that you put on those boards right after they gave you?
Uh, he was on the board before I got here?
No, no.
Reappointed?
The other one. Yeah, both of them. You put, you put on two of your donors on, like.
I never got a penny from Jack Barco. He's not on any campaign finance report. So that's a lie.
And then you, but you're getting money from what? A, a club that's not even a pack? Like a cigar club? Is that what you do?
I never got a penny from a cigar club. Look at my campaign finance report.
Yeah, defense with Regina, right?
You're, you're fishing for all kinds of stuff. You love the law of accusations out there and hope that they stick.
No, we, we know it. We, we know.
All right.
All I'm saying is, I feel bad for this Director of RAP. And, and I would hope that she would reconsider it, accepting this appointment because it does not smell, taste, or look ethical in any way, shape or form.
Only because she has a similar masters in educational and interest background as I do as it relates to planning and CDBG. We, she's a, a, absolutely an excellent person to be there.
I, I believe she probably is an excellent person. They got caught up in the Nikki Frenchco world in which everyone becomes victims.
Yes. Yes. The ten dollar victim.
Yes, I'm glad you accepted.
Yes, they are.
Glad you accepted that. There are other employees that do not work and lost their careers because of you. And now you put this woman in jeopardy.
Okay, this is really.
Yeah, that's how petty it is. Over ten dollars, you went in and complained and then walked out of there thinking you won by pointing this lady on a board and did not have to pay your ten dollar ticket.
That's not.
Ten dollars.
That's not.
Ten bucks.
That's not.
Cause you didn't walk sixty feet to your, your parking spot.
Oh, I urge everybody to look into that and get to the bottom of it and get.
Ray, I know you're on it. I know you're looking at this. I've never seen something as unethical in my entire life yet in government.
Yeah. To, to find out why someone took it, to go in with a question. And then also with an interest in.
What was the question? You were in a two hour parking spot for seven hours.
No.
Yeah, and you used the handicap thing to try to say you had more time because you have a handicap placard, which allows you four hours. You were still there more than the four hours in that spot. Sixty feet from your spot with your name on it.
What happened is they weren't able.
Sixty feet.
I found out that the person was not able to read the entire thing. So that's, that's all. I just, there was information.
Doesn't matter. You weren't in a handicap spot anyway.
Oh, my God.
You were north of the polls out on Harmon Street where the handicap ends and it's a share.
Either, either way, I, I also was there to talk about the Transportation Improvement District.
Oh, since, let me go talk about it. Since I'm here, let me bring up this ticket.
I did. Okay, all right.
It's not the way it was relayed to us. You think we just found this out? People were disgusted that you did that and that's why they came to us and complained. People thought it was unethical and thought that we, they needed to report it to somebody because they thought it was unethical. People thought that that was abuse of your powers, Commissioner, and thought it was abuse of the power of the Director to accept this position.
Try to contact rap. Yeah. To, obviously because my keys, I was trying to contact him too because I was concerned about the board's failure to do the Transportation Improvement District correctly. I mean, she.
My case supports the board's decision.
Okay.
And, and Melissa Phillips has nothing to do with the board, with the tit or with my keys.
Okay. I, well, we were discussing that.
Well, again, I would hope she does the right thing. I would hope that you regret putting her in that position, apologize to her for putting her in that position.
More. Is there more?
You asked for it. I mean, we, we can, anyone else have anything else?
Come on. Mara, well, Mara doesn't feel well today. Let's keep it going.
Why is that funny? I don't understand.
Cause it was the only meeting that we had, that was actually going to be wrapped up quickly and, and people weren't coming up, so.
You did. You wasted a half hour.
Right.
Talking about what ifs instead of getting things done.
So. More? Is there anything else?
No.
Please.
No.
Not today? Okay.
Not today or ever. I don't have time for nonsense.
Entertain a motion again, more please.
Make a motion adjourned.
I second that.
Mr. Cancel Amesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
I'm disappointed. No, I'm just going to say no.